Whatever. I'm open to whatever we're supposed to do.
Well, I mean to give a feedback to you then, if we only have three out of seven members who actively represent their comments on the council, I'm gonna have to say, oh, we didn't have a quorum.
Right.
I'm a little...
Yeah, I don't know if we can make a present position.
Well, I mean, they can talk about it, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So... Should I open the meeting, or are we just gonna talk about it?
Go ahead and open it.
Okay. Call the public hearing to order? Any objections under juridic- jurisdictional grounds? Or any conflict of interest of ex parte contacts? All right. Staff report? And I think our... Can we... We can't even adopt the minutes, can we, since we don't have a quorum?
No.
So...
You can't?
Okay. I guess staff report would be what we need.
Let's do possibly, just so we can establish that no quorum is here. Commissioner Cherry?
Here.
Commissioner Merino? Commissioner Berg?
Here.
Commissioner Agiri? Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Miller? Thank you. Would you like me to proceed with the staff report on the first item?
I guess that's what we need to do, is to report on the... The public hearing for the marijuana-related businesses?
Yes.
Would that be...
Yes. And I think for the purposes of the minutes, we should frame this as a commission discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the city council has asked that the planning commission take a look at the current marijuana regulations that we have on the books. Because there's been some discussion about language that we have in these regulations that's more stringent than what is in the state regulations. And the key issues are the distance between marijuana businesses. The distance between marijuana businesses and residential uses. And then, the code as it exists today, it needs a few more definitions to round out our regulations. So those are the three things that we're looking to talk with you about tonight. There was a supplemental report attached to your main staff report. It's about four pages long, and I'd like to walk you through that. Right now, the code says that there won't be marijuana businesses within a thousand feet of any... This is really key, to listen to this carefully. Any residential use in any zone. And the other requirement is, nor within a thousand feet of another marijuana business of the same type. And so, what I'd like to do is point out to you the little map on the second page of this. This identifies where these businesses are. And there's a little dotted line that shows you where a thousand feet is around each one of them. And this identifies these marijuana locations.
You can have an extra one of those, too, because I sort of didn't.
You can have this one.
Well, no, but you have... What are you gonna look at?
Well, I'm good. I wrote it.
She's got it memorized.
I think I got it. Here you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Thanks. Then I have a... You have a question?
Sure.
What are the current requirements for liquor stores?
You know, those are run through the state, so I don't...
But I mean, where they're located.
Yeah. I don't believe there is a...
Yeah, probably just one in the U.C. and not too close to schools or residence.
Well, I mean, that's... I mean, I guess where I'm coming from is...
Yeah.
This is very specific, this thousand feet and this and that. And I guess I don't really understand why... I mean, if we're concerned about products that are gonna be used only by adults, let's put it that way.
Right.
Then, I guess I don't know why there should be a difference in the liquor store. I guess, for that matter, that's fine. I'm not gonna throw it in there. I will, I will. The corner grocery selling beer and wine than, you know, than a marijuana store. I mean, I think it creates another sort of, if I may use the colloquial term, goofy requirement about something that I don't really understand why there would be a difference. You know, I mean, if there's a... You know, I mean, as... As kind of tightly controlled as they are, I mean, I did go to one once to see what it was like. And it, you know...
Well, no, it still gets sold.
Well, sure. I mean, nobody's questioning it's gonna get... Stuff's gonna get sold, but I...
And so, having more dispensaries is only going to exasperate that problem, in my opinion.
Well...
Plus, the other thing, too, I prefer not to have Coos Bay known as the town where you drive down the street and see a bunch of dispensaries.
You can already do that.
You can already do that.
But I really am questioning whether that's really... I guess I can't quite imagine that... I mean, that happening. I mean, I guess I wouldn't really want Coos Bay to be the place that had, you know, fifteen adult bookstores in the same block either.
Or dispersed throughout.
It's good to be the Bunker Hills mouth in the city limits.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of things that some of us may not think are terrific, but they're still... Whether they really would... I can't imagine how much of a proliferation of it that this rule's gonna stop anything, you know? Except for to make it inconvenient for the guy that owns the building who wants to rent to the... To the... To the... To that business, you know? And I don't know of any of those in particular, but I'm just saying. I guess I just don't understand a thousand feet. And, first of all, when it comes to the residential thing with the apartment factor involved. And then, the other thing about the thousand feet between these businesses is so... Now, what does a thousand feet as that a...
Not great part of it.
What about limiting the number of business permits to these dispensaries on a per capita basis? And let the market decide where they should be or shouldn't be? Rather than trying, you know, keep them within a commercial zoning district? And just base it on population in town versus distance from each other?
But the thing is, you don't... We don't limit the number of convenience grocery stores on beer, wine, cigarettes.
Well, you know, they figure that out before they build the store. They know how many people will probably come.
You know, I mean, they don't... Or if you wanna get right out into it, let's just use the cigarette store itself, you know, the... Which, you know, there's... As far as I know, there's just... There's no limitation on those, but they're self-limiting by the...
Yep.
I kinda like the idea of a one-stop shop. That way, I don't have to drive all over town afterward.
Well, see, there's... But if you lived upstairs, the building, well, you'd be okay. Well, anyway, those are just my thoughts. I guess I don't understand the thousand feet. And I think really, it's a thing that's gonna get limited, but it's just by virtue of its... Of the... Of the market and the economy. And I guess if we had so many people that needed to get to these places, that they had to be every twenty feet, well, then, I guess we'd just be... We'd be serving the populace with what they've looked for.
I had a question for you. You mentioned, do we really wanna create a potential where you could have a plethora of these businesses? You have a situation now, when you look at that map, and this is a live, on-the-ground situation. And you've all been out in the community. Are... Is there a comfort level now with the distance between the stores? Or do you feel like there's too many? Do you feel like they're too close together? Because this gives you kind of a good idea of what it, you know, what it looks like now. And we could identify the distance between all those stores now and give you that as an example. I don't know. What are your thoughts on the way it is now, when you go down the street? By the way, number four is no longer in operation on your map. There no...
And I'd also add that number three is now in a different location.
Yes.
So, well...
If you're not... I... You know, if you're not looking for it, I... They don't jump out at you, for the most part. Maybe one or two, but...
Well, they're, you know, they're... I guess, I, you know, to me, they're not offensive. I mean, you know, it isn't like I, you know, something that I... I... And it's like, you know, there's a lot of other places and businesses that I just drive right by, too, and don't stop or don't... Not interested in whether they're there or not. And wouldn't care if they were every thousand feet or, you know? So, I guess... Well, anyway, I'm gonna shut up now. But I guess my comment, just in general, is, I think worrying about trying to space these things out and work ourselves out with that is pointless exercise.
Can you clarify for our... For staff's help? Is that... Is that position related just to the commercial marijuana uses? Or the thousand feet between the stores and the residential use?
Well, I'm not, you know, getting into that. I was just using it as kind of a comparison. I don't think there's any... I wouldn't limit space between any businesses that are out there. You know, unless it may be real estate companies, which I don't think there should be any within about twenty miles of mine.
Only one here and one there, huh?
Yeah. One per city.
Yeah.
So, no, I don't see where we're... It seems to me there's like one more thing for you guys to have to try to manage.
Right. Mattress companies also go in that category. There's so many of them that, you know, you wonder how many times people buy mattresses.
Yeah, I... It's... The problem is that, you know, we're losing businesses rather than worrying about getting too many or too close.
Is there anything we need to do with this?
Well, actually, you have a quorum now, so... And I think it would be really helpful to hear from each of you with your conclusions on this. I think Commissioner Berg, you're... What I'm hearing from you is, remove these thousand-foot limitations for both. That... Am I incorrect?
No, I'm saying, I don't think there's any...
So, should we have a motion?
No, I would like to... We'd like to have the record show what each of you think about this. And what your thoughts are, if you should make a recommendation tonight.
I agree with Commissioner Berg that, you know, if they're... If they are treated like all other businesses, then that would simplify things. And keep it pretty simple and easy to do. Otherwise, you're gonna be nitpicking and everything and...
Was there any kind of reason for the thousand feet? I mean, was that a recommendation from some... I mean, did any part of the city want that?
It was a part of the early creation of these regulations. I don't have the citation of when it was adopted, but I think it's been at least...
Was there any kind of, lack of a better term, legislative history behind the rationale for that thousand feet?
I think... I think there was some legislation when it was... Excuse me. Medical marijuana dispensaries. Jim, could you fill in on that?
Yeah, that's my recollection. It's a holdover from the medical marijuana time. And I think at the time, the state law was, it had to be a thousand feet for the school. And I think that's probably how it kind of carried over.
Is there any clear... How are other cities managing this? And is that...
Well, it's all over... It's all over the board. I mean, every city has its own situation. I mean, I've seen it both ways. I think what's most pertinent is, what'll work for this city? And that's why I asked the question about, when you drive around town now, does it seem like it's an okay number and an okay distance? So, anyway, yeah. I... I mean, I could go back and research different cities, but I think you're gonna find they're all kind of all over the board.
I think for me, I kind of agree with Jim. I think the market will dictate realistically, just, you know, how many towns this size can support. I think we probably will, you know, maybe support a little more than other towns this size just due to the fact that we get a lot of tourism come through. We have a lot of golfers flying into North Bend, and the first stop they hit when they get on their party shuttle bus down to Bannon is one of these dispensaries here. So, we probably do handle a little bit more volume than incomparable-sized towns. But I think the, you know, they'll find that balance of...
Okay. Do you need to go on to the next topic?
No, I'm waiting for the last comment.
Oh, I thought we had...
Oh, is that Bill?
No, I...
Oh, okay. I think that proximity restriction, I think, is appropriate. A good buddy of mine that, well, is lamenting the fact that what he could sell for X amount now sells for Y. And I think that a lot of this product, just, it's people that get in there, think they can make a quick buck, don't realize how to run a business. You already see people from... Or companies from out of the area coming in and, you know, opening up shop. I think there's probably enough. I don't think there needs to be anymore. And if they can, you know, a thousand feet, five hundred feet, whatever, I think there should be something approximately.
Do you have a distance that you think...
I don't... No, I don't. I'm horrible when it comes to spatial relations.
Sure.
Well, you know, maybe to go along with what you're saying, maybe, but it should be, you know, some kind of a franchise idea that, you know, that's why we don't have six natural gas companies and, you know, five... You know, I mean, if there's some number that says per population that you're gonna have, and you, you know, have basically a licensure for franchise for that many, and, you know, if that's... But I tend... I kind of think that the, like, you know... Well, I most... Hate to call myself one, but like, as good capitalists, you know, we sort of think that the marketplace will, you know, create the, you know, create the... You know, they'll sink or swim based on, you know, the... How they run their business and stuff. And so, the, you know, whether we should be protecting, you know, anybody from anybody else in that business is, you know, sort of my idea about real estate, which I do think it'd be a good idea to limit that, but anyway. So, anyway, I guess that's just my thought, that there's a, you know, just like the liquor stores, well, you have one for every jurisdiction, I guess. I don't know how the OLC is... Clearly, you know, there's more than one in Portland, so there's gotta be some kind of little of a population figure that, you know? But whether the OLC, which is kind of an archaic institution in itself, is an example or not, I don't know. But I... And, you know, me hearing, I think, you know, if we were concerned that there'd be whole sections of the town that were gonna be suddenly donated, you know, become, you know, inundated somehow with this because of, you know, that'd be one thing, but I don't... I don't know about that. I just don't... I just don't even know where the IVs, some of them I see, I haven't even realized they're till I've driven by them a few times, you know?
Well, and I... And really, to that point, too, I think you look at... You look at most of these places, and they've taken buildings or spaces that have been vacant for a decade-plus, in some of their cases, and turned them back into nice buildings. And they're actually, you know, I think, casting the argument about the effects of their product on the population as far as improving the neighborhoods and improving these buildings. I think they've been a net positive.
Well, there's a couple of ways we could handle this. I think what I'm hearing is a consensus related to the distance between... The thousand feet between businesses. The potential to recommend to remove that. The other option is to say, to let the council know, there was a consensus of three, 'cause you don't have a full commission. There's a consensus of three, but a point provided about, you know, retaining some restriction in distance so that the market does not become oversaturated. So, I would look to you to tell me if you would like to go with the first option, to talk about a consensus and then kind of the minority opinion? Or do you wanna make a full-on recommendation?
I think that'd be fine.
Is that okay?
That'd be fine, me. I think that...
Also, I don't think... Nobody's worried about the residential, a thousand feet residential.
Well, I mean, I think that needs to just go.
Yeah.
Because it makes no sense, and they can't. I mean, like I say, if you're right now, like, we have one underneath an apartment in Coos Bay, and maybe more than one. I don't know. Just that's what I'm familiar with. So, clearly, that would be an instant violation. And I think that that just does not make any sense. Worrying about, you know, the density of the businesses is another matter. I tend to think that... Well, anyway, they kind of told you my opinions.
Okay. Is there consensus on the removal of the thousand feet residential uses?
Is there? I... I prefer there to be some kind of distance regulation, but I don't know what thousand feet's the right thing.
Okay.
I'd wanna hear from somebody, I mean... I want... Well, the people that I have heard from, I mean, it doesn't really make a difference, I suppose. It's more just the ease of access.
Sure.
That creates issues.
Is there a single one of these that would comply with that?
No.
The one I'm looking at.
So, what I mean, so what do we...
It's already... It's already too late.
But this is for... This is... If there were new... If there were new applications that came in, we'd have to consider that. This wasn't... This was not as vigorously vetted as it probably should've been when all these stores came in, so...
Okay.
I'd be curious to see if there was any single commercial space that didn't overlap within a thousand feet of... I'm sure there must be, maybe, but...
Well, if you look on that map, it identifies the residential zones in a different color. And if you see the little dotted circle around all of these, I think in nearly every case, they touch them... They touch a residential area in some cases.
A little bit.
But that doesn't really speak to the point that Commissioner Berg was talking about, that if the city is encouraging residential uses above commer... Residential uses above commercial uses to create more housing... Actually, that's not exactly what you said, but I'm throwing it in there, 'cause it's important. It's a council goal to create more housing. And if you can create housing on second floors and behind commercial development, and then you say, "Well, you can't, you know, you can't..." It makes it a little tough, so...
Well, I think it makes it a possible conundrum. Unless you're, you know, I mean, like you say, unless you're... Because we are, I mean, with the downtown, clearly has lots of upstairs...
Yes.
Residential potential. And we want that. I mean, you know, I mean, I think we, I mean, most... I mean, people would love it if some of those... I didn't remember... I own a building like that. The upstairs is not used. I mean, it would be great if that were apartments, you know?
Yeah.
And sadly, we don't have a marijuana distributor in our building, but if we did, like... You know, I mean, I wouldn't want that to prevent the fact that we can have apartments above it, anyway.
Sure.
But that's how I'd like to think of it.
Well, I can frame this piece of it to the council the same way as the other piece, if that's...
Okay.
If that's okay with you guys. Okay.
Sounds good.
There's a couple of other points here I'd like to... I'd like to make and get consensus on, if I could. One of them is just cleanup of an error where we referenced just the industrial commercial zone for location of marijuana businesses. That's incorrect. You can have marijuana businesses in retail commercial areas, and they're identified that way. You can also have marijuana business for indoor grows and processing in industrial commercial zones. The city doesn't allow any outdoor grows. So, we wanna clean that up. That's on page three of four under A. You can see where the words "in the industrial commercial zone" is stricken. So, if there's consensus of the commission to go ahead with that, I can present that as well. Is that... Does that work for everybody? Okay. And then, the last piece of this, the council pointed out that we didn't really have any definitions surrounding, you know, the word marijuana in our development code. And so, if you look on page three of four at the bottom, you will see the definitions that we're proposing be included in our definition section of the code under marijuana businesses. And these are patterned after... I looked at the definitions in some other communities, and we could've gotten really long and involved, but these seemed like they would get the job done. If there's commission consensus on that, I can share that with the council, too.
Just curious, was there anything in the OARs? Or anything, any definitions that came up from the state?
I think they were a lot more lengthy. I'd have to go back and look at them. And we could just parrot the OARs, if you like.
I mean, those are at least tested.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I mean, they're... If people have questions about them, they at least go through the administrative process.
Okay. Is there consensus that these be replaced with the OAR definitions? We can certainly do that.
Could we review the similar OAR definitions and...
Well, actually, I think I would ask... I don't have a computer here, but if Kerry could look it up, the Oregon Administrative Rules? And we'd need... I think we'd need a couple of minutes to locate them.
Is the... Is the drive-up window, is that a rule to operate one of those businesses by the... Is it the OLC that governs those things?
For which one?
For the dispensaries?
Yeah.
Is that an OLC rule that prohibits drive-through, pass-through?
I don't know.
I'm just curious why we're...
I don't know.
Why we're caught up on a drive...
Yeah.
You know, what's wrong with the drive-through window? Someone knows what they want.
It's still so new that it probably isn't...
And I don't know if there might be some rule...
I've never seen a drive-through beer in Oregon, have you? I've never seen a drive-through beer in Oregon, or, you know, like, something from Louisiana.
Yeah, you go to New Orleans, you get your hurricane's ass.
Right. But I mean, maybe it might not be a bad...
You don't need to wait it out in the park?
No, not when it's raining. I don't even go into these stores.
Well, I had not intended to bring these back to you to review at another meeting, because the council wants to look at this at their next meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay.
And so, I was gonna have to hustle to get this to work.
I think that parroting the Oregon state laws...
Okay.
Makes sense, because otherwise, we have to go by those anyway, don't we?
Yes, we do.
So, it doesn't... I mean, we're kind of kidding ourselves that we're gonna do anything less stringent. And probably not much reading, doing anything more stringent.
Right.
So, my suggestion would be just to do that.
But I guess, Ms. Johnson, for those specific definitions, do they... I don't even know if they have them for, what is it, marijuana retail?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure that they do. But I think what I would do is say, I would have a definition called marijuana, 'cause I know it defines marijuana, right?
Right, right. That's...
And then, I would have marijuana-related business in those two categories. And I think that kind of gets to the heart of where you're at, if that works for the commission.
That works.
Can we just point to, rather than listing out our own definitions, can we just point to we follow whatever definitions that... That way, we don't have to update them every time the OAR... Every time the state changes something.
Usually, what it would say is, like, marijuana has defined OAR blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Yeah. We just go with something like that, as opposed to picking and choosing what we wanna...
Yeah.
Well, how about this? Why don't we frame it with, number one, with the definition? If I cannot locate definitions of marijuana retail or marijuana growing and processing, I'd like to use these. If I can locate them in the OARs, I will replace these with those definitions. Does that work?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I think that's...
Okay. It's hard to see you.
No, I know.
Yeah. It sounds reasonable. Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
Beer's here.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll be using then the consensus method and the minutes will reflect that, that there's not a recommendation but a consensus, given that we didn't have a full commission.
All right.
Thank you, this was very helpful.
Do we need to open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, better do that.
You want to do what?
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh. On the, um, on the SROs?
On the marijuana.
On marijuana?
Yeah, because it's a public hearing and we, for the record, we need to open.
Okay, yeah, since we got a, uh, quorum, okay. Uh, the hearing, the, public hearing is open, is there any opposition or consensus, anybody to, um, come before us? Seeing none? Let's go on to the SROs.
You want to go back and approve the minutes since we have the quorum?
Oh, okay. Do we have them, I didn't get minutes in mind, I don't believe. Did we, do we have the minutes?
I, I'll move the, we've approved the, adopt the minutes as written for the June eighth meeting.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Pass? Okay. Now we need to, um, I guess we need to open on the, um, well, it's a workshop to discuss Title seventeen of, uh, single room occupancy?
Yes.
What do we need to do with this?
Well, I'd like to go over it with you briefly and then I'd like you to talk about it, I'd like to get your thoughts. What I'll do is, uh, I'm gonna bring this back to another public, to a full on public hearing, this is just a workshop. Um, when you have a full commission, because this is, uh, something I think we, we're gonna want to advertise to, to get a few votes to come out. Um, as you can, as you probably remember, this last year, we spent a lot of time working on new housing regulations in our code. And we did that because we were trying to identify simpler ways for people to have shelter in our city. Um, we came up with, uh, you know, quite a few different things and one of the things that was included in the code, but we didn't create any, um, standards or definitions for them, was, was single room occupancies. And these are, um, for lack of a better term, if you can think back to the old boarding house style living, where somebody brings in boarders and they serve them dinner and everybody has a bedroom, or if you even think of like a dorm, dorm living, it's a lot like that. And today though, um, with the building codes being what they are, there's, you know, certain things that have to be done for that kind of living situation. And the, the planning world has kind of taken a, a key from that over the last few years. Um, single room occupancies are, um, used all over the country to accommodate folks that can't afford to get an apartment, but they want to have their own private space. So what we did was we identified, um, some new regulations for that, um, to kind of dictate how those could be put together. Um, I'd just like to walk you through them if I could, I won't linger too long on any, any one of them, but I'd like, if I could just generate a little bit of a discussion. The purpose of this would be to enable, um, some reduced sized dwelling units called single room occupancies, whether it be in a house or in a residential hotel, as affordable housing options. Typically, you can rent a, a single room occupancy for much less than you would, um, you know, a, a full apartment. The requirements would be, um, would include compliance with all the state, uh, building code guidelines. There would need to be, um, some, uh, site management, um, and a management plan, that we need to be parking. Um, the tenancy would be not for less than thirty days, so in other words, you wouldn't use these like vacation rentals or, um, hotels. The criteria is identified on how big these would be, um, how many folks could live in them. There's, uh, criteria here about kitchen and bath facilities. You could go either with a bathroom in every room or a common bathroom, common kitchen. This identifies that there would need to be laundry facilities, common, uh, common space. And these are all particular to, um, if you're in a living unit, like if you're in a house and you would have this. The second page, uh, really goes over the same things, except these, these criteria would be relevant to a hotel. So if you had a hotel that was utilizing their rooms on a more long-term basis, um, this would be the criteria that they would fill. So, um, if, if you'd have, uh, wanna go ahead and talk about this, that'd be great. If you'd rather wait for a full quorum and more advertisements, so you have public feedback, that'd be fine too. This is something that when we do go to a public hearing, I'll be including it in the Friday newsletter and, uh, letting some of the local housing groups know about it as well. Since it is an attempt on our part to really feed the lower end of the, um, income levels here in town.
Are we gonna, we're gonna somehow or sometime have to make some decisions and vote on some of this stuff, right?
Yes. And it, your decision will be a recommendation to the council because they have to take.
So we probably should have more people, uh, comes to that part.
Well, that's up to you, I thought I'd just try to scare up your initial thoughts if you, if you'd.
I have some initial thoughts. Is there gonna be any kind of licensing requirement for these things?
They would need to have a, you would need to have a business license.
What about insurance?
Um, yeah, that's kind of a private, yeah, that's kind of a private matter, I don't know that we would regulate that, but I could look into that.
And are there, I mean, I mean, you're, I mean, there's a management plan and all that. Here's the thing, I, uh, one of the jobs that I do, I, I'm a prosecutor in the Reed's Port Municipal Court. And we have several of these places that are like this up there. And inevitably, there's problems, I mean, between people getting upset because somebody didn't do the dishes or, um, somebody didn't, you know, their litter box stinks or something like that. And I guess my question would be, you know, apartment, that's a little bit different, but when everybody's using some of the same common facilities, in fact, I've dealt with some of them already that were in this town, with people that have passed away and you go in there and all of a sudden each room is rented out to somebody else, not rented out, but, you know, you try to find an agreement. It's a mess, I mean, trying to get people out because are they tenants, are they not, uh, is there any kind of rental agreement, what is it? Um, I don't, I understand what the board want, you know, what the city wants and what they're trying to do, but, I mean, these things are problematic at best.
Well, when you talk about a boarding house, now, my idea of that, that taken from television or whatever, is that, you know, you've got a nice old house with half a dozen old guys living there and some nice pleasant middle aged lady cooking for them and a lot of colorful talk around the table and, but she's there kind of running things, I mean, it's kind of her deal and, and, and these guys, everybody's well behaved, of course, in my little story, but is that what there's, is this a place where there is a, a quote unquote owner manager in, in residence? Or is it a building with ten rooms and that you write, rent to ten people and with a bathroom down the hall and you hope for the best?
Well, it, you can add a requirement for an onsite manager.
Well, I just don't know what.
Yeah, it's not, it's not written that way now. But you can add a requirement for an onsite manager.
A lot of places are, this is kind of the new big thing in landlord right now, is, is doing this and running these where they'll have each, each room rented to somebody. And it's great, yeah, it sounds like management, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I know people are doing it successfully elsewhere and probably here in town already, I don't know. My, my biggest concern.
Sure they are, yeah.
Sorry, nothing was old home to keep all these chores.
And, and the more, the more colleges and, you know, universities and stuff, the more you're gonna have things like this as well.
Well, I know that, you know, there was a quad concept that's been around a long time in Europe and then here, you know, where you have, you know, four bedrooms or something and there's a,
Yeah.
There's a shared kitchen.
Which is pretty much along these lines as well.
Place where you're eating, but everybody kind of has their own cooking and it's, you know, and supposedly they'll all get along with each other somehow.
Yeah.
But I, I, I mean, I do think that this sounds like a challenge.
And I don't know, I didn't get a chance to read the, um, Title fifteen and maybe it's addressed in there, but I think it should be addressed in the, uh, unit criteria as far as, uh, egress from, from these living spaces, um, making sure that there's at least one exterior option, um, to get out a window or, you know, I worry about, I worry about.
Fire, fire, um.
Yeah, somebody just, just putting somebody in an interior room without a, a way.
Right.
Sister.
And, and this, we have to comply with Title fifteen, which is the city's adoption of all those safety codes, yeah.
And that's, yeah, and that's what I figured, it was probably buried in there, but I think I would, I think it's important enough that it should be pulled out and mentioned right up front as well, that, that it's, it's gotta be there because I could see people taking advantage of, of this and, if we don't have people going out and inspecting these units beforehand, then I could see us inadvertently, uh, handing out a, a business license to landlord to do this and then find out when there's some tragedy that.
Sure.
They were abusing the, uh.
Good points. I will note that there is an onsite management requirement in the, in the residential hotels. It's number two under seventeen dot three seven oh oh one five. And that would be for seven or more rooms. And that would, the, the management would be including a dwelling unit for a manager, so it, it wouldn't be a guy behind a desk, it'd be somebody living there. Kind of like a dorm room, dorm, you know, a dorm facility, so. What I can do is, uh, work on this a little bit with some of your comments about the, um, insurance requirement, um, more specifics about certain Title fifteen requirements, like egress and, um, that kind of thing. I can bring back a little more information about onsite management and maybe limitation of number of rooms, um.
Where, where are they planning on putting these, what zones?
Well, right now, they're permitted in residential zones, medium density.
And we have no idea how many there are, I'm sure.
We don't.
And is that something that we're not gonna address?
No, we're not gonna go down that rabbit hole, but when people come in and they, they want to get, you know, a new water heater or, not a water heater, they want some improvement on their house and they say, well, I rent this, well, then we'd say, oh, okay, well, you need to make sure you comply with these things too. Now, this isn't gonna preclude, you know, mom and pop with two extra bedrooms from, you know.
They need a business license though, don't they, when they do that?
Pardon me?
They're supposed to have a business license?
Well, they should, but, I mean, we don't have a business licensed police officer, so, I mean, it's just very hard to.
Yeah.
So.
So we'd be trying to create, or have a set of rules for somebody that wants to be compliant with all this stuff. But if at the lower end of the spectrum, somebody that just wants to jam a bunch of people into this house, we're not gonna know about it until there's some.
Till somebody complains.
Till it burns out. Cause it happens.
And the, the tricky thing is, is I'm sure you've snagged all the multifamily properties in town long ago, was it six, seven years ago when we started that business license for landlords? I'm sure that, you know, the multifamily units were easy to, to find and, and track those landlords down. But these are single family houses, the, so you never know, um, you know, about the only way to tell is go through each one and find out where the mailing address was for the, you know, and then try to track them down that way and that's just not realistic, so.
I, I had a question about your, your comment about you've heard cases on this.
Yeah.
Um, typically, what is the size of the house?
And that's, that varies.
Okay.
I, I will tell you, I know that, you know, where the, what do you call it, the place the priest used to live by Saint Monica's, that big house.
Uh-huh, the parsonage, yeah.
The parsonage, thank you. And then next door, there's that really old house.
Mm-hmm.
That was a boarding house.
Okay.
When, when that, when that fellow died, I probated his estate and, and trying to get rid of the people in that, and you could, I, it was difficult. I'll just leave it at that. In Reed's Port, a lot what we see is four, five, sometimes up to ten people in a house.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what the living arrangements are, or, you know, sometimes just a couple of different rooms out in the house rented out.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's some kind of problem. Now, granted, I only see it when there's a problem, right? I, I don't see the ones that go, go great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it just seems like, and there are always, you know, low level type of crimes where if our police department had to go deal with it, who feels not gonna even look at it?
Right.
You know what I mean? Whereas in Reed's Port, they have the Municipal Court that tries to take care of some of those quality of life issues. So, I mean, that, that would be my concern and I guess, you know, I don't want a boarding house next to my parents' house. I mean, that's just my own box, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's kind of what I see.
Generally, would you, and, and this is only an assumption on my part, since you've been kind of, um, do you think generally that the, the potential for problems rises with the, with a larger number of rooms for rent in one facility than just a couple?
I can't make, I, I don't have the empirical data in my head to say that.
Sure, okay.
I just can't recall, I mean, there's nothing that.
Okay.
Well, the more dense population in one place, the more problems you're gonna have, but, yeah.
And, and then, you know, somebody's smoking, somebody else nabs, they squirt them with a hose and then.
Right.
It just, again, not the crime of the century, but just things that get law enforcement involved and lord knows they have enough other things to do.
Right, right.
And, you know, it's bad enough the neighbors don't get along, but when you're actually sharing the kitchen and the bathroom, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and that's, I know the, well, I don't know, but I mean, that's why I'm asking about it, some kind of insurance requirement too, because I, I, I believe that some of these people that rent out rooms are somewhat unscrupulous and they're going to bully people and, you know, they're not gonna follow landlord tenant law, which I'm assuming these things follow.
Everything's gotta be cash and it's gonna be.
What's that?
Everything's gonna be cash.
Have we reached out to the Rental Owners Association for, uh, opinion on this at all?
Um, no, not yet, I wanted to talk to you guys first, just get your initial thoughts.
Is there any idea about how many of these there are at all? Is there any kind of notion that, that Coos Bay?
Well, for, you know, I get stray phone calls from people looking for housing, you know? And it's like, well, I'm living in a garage right now, I don't know where to go, I give them the housing authorities, there are a lot of people that don't, that have very unsatisfactory housing and.
Only three or four, just when I came in out here.
Yeah, it's very, so it's, it's tough.
I bet there's a lot more than anyone's willing to admit.
Yes, I think you're right.
And, uh, yeah, the kids these days are calling it house hacking gym, where you rent out a couple of rooms in your house. And, uh, that's the, that's the buzzy term.
That, that's probably the norm.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's kind of where you're, you're, you know, in your mid twenties, you have first one to graduate college or something, you buy a house and then you rented out rooms to your friends or, you know, people, whoever.
Or you're retired and need to. Or you're retired and need somebody to help you with the mortgage.
Exactly, and, and I think there's a lot of that going on.
How would you regulate that? And that's just-
And that's, you know, I don't even know, does it, does it need to be-
That's a can of worms.
Does it need to be regulated by the city, when there's already covered by landlord-tenant law and the state, and is that something that-
Well, it sounds like there's no way to, to do it anyway.
Right.
I mean, it's, I mean, we could have-
I mean, it would definitely fall under landlord-tenant law, and I can, I would bet you a hundred bucks that most of those people that are doing it on the down-low are in violation of some form of Chapter ninety.
For sure. Even people that try and do it legit usually run afoul of something in there these days, but, uh-
Well, I mediate evictions, uh, during the week for the county, and we get very few of these type of evictions, where sometimes it's and all others, where there's two or three others that are not related. So that would be probably similar to that, but I'd say that's less than ten percent of all the cases we see.
I guess, I just kinda think about this landlord-tenant law thing. Okay, so you have a law that's supposed to deal with tenancies. And there's, and there's nothing about that law that says it's only for middle-class people or anything. I mean, it's, it's for everybody. So, it seems like if they were, and landlord was abusing his or her tenants, that he would be subject to the, pending penalties under the landlord-tenant law. They were there.
They definitely would be if they were taking money in exchange for providing a dwelling here.
Right. And so I don't, I guess what I don't know is how we can, like, create another set of rules. It sort of sounds like that would work. Kinda, kinda wanna make somehow this thing work, but I guess I'm having trouble understanding how we can create a new set of rules for, for this sort of anomalous activity.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we can enforce, and we would only know about it in kind of the best circumstances where, where somebody could say this.
And we'll be telling the, the, some people who really mean for the good, we might have to tell them, "Sorry, you can't do that."
Yeah.
Because of this rule or that rule.
I, I mean-
But, and you, really what you'd have to do is talk to somebody at the county, and probably flip them some money to have them compile a list of single-family homes that their, uh, owners are out of town, out of state, whatever, and start tracking all those people down, and, and cross-reference that with who we have business licenses with already, and then start tracking down the ones that the owners, they're, they get their property tax statements mailed to them out of state. And you'd have to start going down, and then you'd have to start doing annual inspections on each of these. You know, it would just never end. It would just keep growing and growing and growing, to this next level, next level, next level. I don't know.
And the people would be, of course, upset when they got questioned about any of this, and so it would always be a constant situation. Anyway, this seems to sound odd, I mean-
And, and I have, you know, we have duplex, and we're now both sides. I think we have to pay, what's it, fifteen bucks a year for the business license for zero to five units, or whatever it is. I have no idea what that, why, you know, what good does that fifteen dollar do? Why do I need a business? We went for seventy years in this town without landlords needing a business license, and six, seven years ago, whenever it was, all of a sudden, we need to start doing business licenses.
That, that was probably this committee before any of us was on it, except for Jim. He was on it back then.
No, I, well, yeah, I mean, I was. I'm sorry if I did that.
It might have been more like, yeah.
I don't know.
So, so what do we need to do today? Anything with this?
Actually, what I'm hearing, you know, what I'm kinda hearing here is, why do we need to do this? Am I, okay.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking what I'm gonna, what I'd like to suggest I do is go back and look at the current landlord-tenant laws, find out how, you know, somebody can complain to remedy problems that they have. And, um, I may give you a call.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, by the way, I do represent the Rental Owners Association of Southwestern Oregon.
Oh, terrific. Well, then, you're the person I'll call, and, um, maybe this gets tabled. And if I find that it just, you know, this would be duplicative, um, it probably isn't necessary to bring it back to you, because there's plenty of other things that you're gonna be looking at.
Sure.
Does that work for everybody?
It works.
Okay, thank you. So maybe there's a motion to table this, to a date uncertain, and leave it at that.
I move that we table the Planning Commission, uh, discussion of single-room occupancy regulations until further notice.
Seconded out?
It moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Powe's the same? Pass?
Thank you. This was helpful.
Are we done with the business?
I think we are. Are you, any commissioner comments?
Any comments?
You know, um, would you mind checking the recording for, um, determination item A, and making sure that the, um, As and Is and Abstain were, were actually correct on these last minutes? I should've brought this up before we approved them, but I didn't.
Which one is that on?
About that Empire.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, and I, I, I'm, 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 may have seconded it, but I'm, I am ninety-nine percent certain I had said no on this. But I could have said, I-
We can double-check the, the recording, yeah.
It's under, under the, here.
Yeah, was them amending that Empire renewal zone stuff to include that section where the libraries proposed to be going.
Anybody else?
I have a comment.
You have a comment? Go right ahead.
I do, yes. Um, it's nice to see all of you. I've been away for a long time. I've either been up or-
We got my extension.
Anyway, um, I also wanted to share with you that, um, in October, at your October meeting, um, one of the things, or, or the only thing that we're gonna bring to you is a discussion about vacation rentals. The council has asked, um, that we hold kind of a listening session, uh, by the Planning Commission regarding vacation rentals. So, um, I would encourage you, if you could all be at that meeting, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
Um, at the November meeting, and this is really exciting, I think, um, any of you that have been following the work about, uh, Front Street over the years?
Yeah.
Um, the council, um, last year, uh, secured some funding for, um, a plan to really kinda button down all the, the nooks and crannies of what had been decided in that area before. How are we gonna design the walkways, and, you know, are we gonna have a parking lot there? What it's gonna, what it's gonna look like? We're gonna have some lighting there. What do we wanna do with the rail running down the middle of the road? And to a little more minutia than what you've seen before, because what they had done was they, we had looked at the last plan that was a little broader, and we're now, we're trying to bring it in. We're calling it the Front Street Blueprint. So, there will be a public hearing on that on November ninth, uh, so the public will have an opportunity to see, uh, what's, what's been developed so far. And, uh, your body has been selected to be the vehicle for that public review, so congratulations. I think you'll, you'll be surprised and, and happy with what you see, so. Um, there was something I was gonna tell you about in September, but I can't remember what it was.
Are we having a meeting in September?
Yes, you are. I believe you are, but we will verify that.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to point out that, you know, we, um, amended our codes last year, as you know. And as a result, you're not gonna be seeing as much as you used to, because we now have streamlined things in a way that they can, stuff can be approved at a staff level, but with the same criteria, um, and notification to people. So, um, I think that's kind of a good thing, because you can then dig your heels into this policy stuff that the coun- the council really does. You know, they look to you to, uh, provide some feedback, representing the community, so, thank you.
Did the council have a specific concern regarding the vacation rentals here you're gonna be looking at, or?
They've been approached by the public, a, a large number of people, um, in one particular part of town that are very concerned about vacation rentals, that do not want, that they would like to see them disallowed in the city, and not permitted at all. And so, uh, they, they talked about this in their workshop. Jim, was that like two weeks ago? Week and a half ago?
It was last week.
Last week, yeah.
Where abouts is this at, too?
Um, over on Prefontaine, that neighborhood over there. There were a lot of folks there that feel very strongly that they should not be allowed in the city. And they had a lot of, you know, a lot of feedback. The chambers were full, so I anticipate you'll have a big crowd that evening as well. So, um, I think what the council's looking for, though, is an opportunity for these folks to really share their thoughts and get some feedback from you, and, and some questions. And then following that, uh, probably in later October, there's, the council would like to have a joint session with the commission, um, so they can reach some decisions on this. Currently, they, um, have instituted a moratorium on these, um, in residential zoning districts. So if you have one of these and you're in a commercial zone, you're fine. But if you're in a residential zone, you, you know, they put the, put the moratorium on it, so that's, that's what's going on.
Do you have any data or anything on how many are currently operating, where they're at, and?
We have, uh, yeah, I have all that information, and, uh, to date, the ones that we know of are running very smoothly, and, and, uh, with business licenses, they're paying lodging tax. But, um, I can get into all that when we meet, and, uh, and talk about it in, in, um, October.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess that's it. One more time.
Be easy. Sorry it's late, everybody.
You didn't miss anything. Except the roll call.
Jim, Jim, Jim piling off for a while about something.
Yeah, I was going on-